I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to the press session, Goldendale City Council for January 6, 2020. And first item on the agenda will be the office of office, Connie Myers buyers, Connie buyers who give that for us and that we're the lineup over here.
As funny as that was, my name is.
Oh, it's half one.
Myers, Myers.
So which way? I don't know what's turning this way.
Can you get all the line?
Okay, yeah.
Photo for the Sentinel.
Oh, good.
Oh, Mike forgot something.
He didn't bring his paper with him.
Connie will say it and you guys can repeat it, so you don't need to really look at your.
Well, yeah, but if I screw up, you'll have worse.
That helps me.
Is that all right?
Yeah, it's fine.
All right, here we go.
Okay, I state your name.
I, Jane Roberts.
Do solemnly swear or affirm
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
that I am a citizen of the United States and State of Washington.
That I am a citizen of the United States and State of Washington.
that I am legally qualified to assume the office.
That I am legally qualified to assume the office.
A council member, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
A council member, that I will support the Constitution and laws of the United States.
and the State of Washington.
And the State of Washington.
and that I will faithfully and impartially
And that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties of this office to the best of my ability.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. At least one will need to be signed this evening before you go. Yes. So with that, we have a full, little call, a full council once again. We don't have a public hearing tonight. We need a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda.
So second.
It moved and seconded to approve the agenda for this meeting and the consent agenda, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. There are no presentations scheduled tonight. We're going to have department reports, the first one from Stephen and then Richie.
All right, for the fire department, I just wanted to let the council know that last year we had 189 calls for service through the fire department. That being said, we had about 10 structure fires, 99 medical related calls, and approximately 10 well end fires. Everything else is just kind of a miscellaneous call for service, could be other things. And to start out the year, we're already got three, so. That would be going every two days.
Building for a new record.
That's really all I have to report.
Appreciate you being here, Stephen, very much. Richie for the police department.
I've got a few things for tonight. Hope everybody had a good Christmas and a good New Year. For the last couple of weeks, the police department has been busy, but no real major cases or major arrests, a lot of misdemeanor type of crimes that we've been dealing with. So things have been actually pretty good for the holiday, which is always a good thing to report. I also have some end of the year numbers to share with the council tonight. For case reports, in 2019, we had 3,338 calls for service. Comparable to the year before, 2018, we had 2,865. So we had an increase of 473 calls this year. And I do attribute, again, I know I've said this in the past, a lot of this goes to a lot more people calling in suspicious activities. We really provoked the crime watch program, people calling in, watching their neighbors' houses. And you know, a lot of the calls that we do go on, we get there and we realize it's not, it's a family member, it's, but it's good things that people are calling in and we want them to continue to call in, let us get in the neighborhood. And so a lot of those calls that increase, we're seeing it's a lot of suspicious people calls, suspicious vehicles, or just suspicious circumstance type of calls that we're responding to. To go along with that, for our total, for the end of the year, for reported crimes that we were able to do some type of activity on, submit charges for, we had 325 for 2019. So if you kind of look at that, we had 3,338 calls for service, but 325 were ones where we actually did paperwork on and submitted some type of a charge for. That was up 97 from the previous year. And again, I do still contribute that to more people are reporting crime that they weren't reporting before. But we want people to report everything that's happening to them in their neighborhoods. So if anything happens to their car, any type of malicious mischief, any type of a, even a small theft that you think is not that important, we still want them to report that so we can at least know where activity, criminal activity is happening inside the city. So I think those are really good numbers for the police department. It did make us pretty busy for the year. That's quite an increase of almost 500 calls. But again, I think it was really good for this year. The department is going to continue on with our training. We're starting off 2020 with, we're going to start off with crime scene training. We're going to do a four week series. We train every Wednesday for two hours, where the whole department is there. And we're going to do a four week parts. And we're going to start off with the initial response, we're going to do scene integrity and safety. We'll do additional resources that the law enforcement can call upon, search warrant considerations, photography, sketch and diagrams, evidence collection, and then the final report ready to go to trial. So we'll be really covering a lot of this over the next four weeks. In February, we're already starting to schedule our active shooter training. And this year, I know I've already said it, but we're going to be concentrating on houses of worship this year. And right now, we're actively looking for a church in town for us to do our active shooter training. We have been getting some phone calls from some of our local churches, obviously with the events that have happened in Texas, security for some of our houses of worship in Goldendale. We are going to go out and actively talk with the pastors or the elders of some of these churches. We're going to talk about the environment aspects of their church, which includes obviously the doors, the windows, the shrubs they have around their buildings, and their internal safety for what they're doing for safety, especially on Sundays. We already have in our protocol for the law enforcement, for the police department, that our officers patrol the park lots of all the churches, they kind of lead frog and go to all of them during the hours. But again, churches need to have some type of a safety protocol inside of their church. And we want to partner with, with the churches in our, in our, in the city. So Mayor, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, good report, Richie, thank you. The next item is council business. And as I noticed when I read the agenda this morning, it's all about us. So I'll have Larry walk us through the pro tem election as well as the standing committee appointments. And we'll see how we all.
We'll take, we'll take them on one at a time.
Okay.
We'll start with the mayor pro tem. And the mayor pro tem, it says in section 2.08040 that biannually, biannually, at the first meeting of the new council, which is this meeting, the members there are by majority vote, so designate one of their number as mayor pro tem and hold that office at the pleasure of the council. So as you're aware, Guy Terrio was the mayor pro tem, who's known with us. So now you as the council can decide who the new mayor pro tem is going to be. We would like that person to be someone that can be available to step in to lead the meetings. And if the mayor is out of town for some reason, then the mayor pro tem would then become the acting mayor at the time. There are some restrictions on what you can and can't do, which I think are outlined in this section. And so it's up to you guys to decide who your mayor pro tem is going to be. And you do it by choosing one of you and then you vote on it.
If I may ask a question, which one is the senior?
I was just going to say.
You senior?
Andy, you should probably lead the discussion.
I'll, I guess if you guys want to do it, I'll do the pro tem.
Okay, so it's by a majority vote. So that was, that was a motion by Justin to select Andy as mayor pro tem. Is there, go ahead, Mayor, you can take it from there. Need a second for that.
Pardon me?
It's by majority vote, so.
You need a second.
You need a second from that.
I thought we just had it.
Well, I, I'll second it.
There you go, my little second.
It's been moved and seconded and the council has selected Andy Hall as the new mayor pro tem. Congratulations. And let's make sure there's not any questions or discussion, all in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. The next item on the agenda is the standing council appointments. That one is where a lot of the city discussions and plans are developed. There's a finance committee, the ordinance committee, the public works committee, and the events committee. These in particular are standing committees, they are permanent. And so we, you need among yourselves to let us know what committees you would like to serve on. We don't, we'd rather not have anybody serving on more than two committees. But if somebody isn't necessarily participating, then it won't necessarily work out that well.
I'd like to stay on the budget and the events committee.
Okay, so are you going to keep tallies of everything, Andy?
I can't.
About who's wanting one.
Who's already found out it's Mike's.
There you go.
Connie will help you.
Okay.
So you'd like to stay in the budget committee and which one?
Ah, the events committee.
Events committee.
And I think you already have served on those, so that brings experience to those. Anyone else interested in the budget committee?
I'm on the budget, I keep on the same.
Continue on.
I'm just there on the budget and the public works.
Which one did you say?
Finance or budget, whatever. Oh, I didn't pick a second one. I'll do events, so I'm on that already.
Shannon said public works also, you gave them public works and budget.
And I was on ordinance committee.
You'd like to stay on that one?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on that.
Anyone else?
Oh, you have a second?
Well, I don't think I had, I don't think I was on another one.
Do you have another one that you would?
Well, we'll see what the rest wants to do and if there's any openings, we maybe have a ticket, but then see what the rest is.
I'll take ordinance committee. And do we still have this budget already taken?
Budget's gone.
Budget's gone, events gone.
No, there's one for events.
I'll take the events.
Events and ordinance. More of the AI on the team.
It'd be interesting that the public works and the ordinance, if there's participation needed on both of those.
Okay, that's all for the ordinance, all for events, all for budget.
I guess I'll hit a public works then, since that's the last left.
Public works, one, two, three. So we have one more public works.
We got three more.
Oh, no, we don't, okay.
So are any of those committees?
Well, what's left?
Nothing, no, nothing left.
One, two, three, four, oh, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, there's enough.
There's 12 spots and there's 14 options.
Okay, good.
I think everybody only got two, believe me.
I got one.
You got one.
No, I have one, which is fine.
We'll make up a new one.
We have a council committee.
Yeah, it's totally fine.
There's also the airport committee, which Guy was involved with and probably still will be, but people welcome to come to that.
Yes, because those are not standing committees, but we still will be needing representation in the council.
Do we do that now or later on, pick the airport committee?
Who is on the, currently who is on the airport committee?
I am.
Well, Jane, do you want to go on the airport committee?
Sure.
Why don't we just do that?
We'll swoop right in.
There will, we've done a lot of the heavy lifting already. And so, but there will be opportunities during the course of the project to have an airport committee meeting if we need to have some major decisions, major points in the planning stages and the construction.
I was going to ask that, do we know when the next airport meeting would be or is Jane the indication?
Well, the next, the next item that needs to be addressed is the consults agreement to start the planning process. I'm not sure how much I've told you, but at the last, I think it was at the last council meeting, I mentioned that we were going to go see the planning department on the next day. And I think that's where we stopped. So we did meet with the planning department. We have a longer list of things that need to be done.
Okay.
And the least of which, not the least of which will be the actual binding site plan and the environmental checklist and the archaeological requirements that are in place because we're getting state money. So whenever you get state money, you got to play by their rules and pull on their strings.
Absolutely.
So we've got a plan set up with the, we had a, what do they call it? Pre-conference meeting with the county and we talked with the public works department, we talked with the planning department and their building department. So we've got an action list that we need to start working on. And that focused on, for the next three months, will be on the planning part of it. Getting all of that arranged and set up so that we can then go next to designing the improvements and then next to actually doing the construction. And I think we've got a pretty good timeline. I'll probably share that timeline with you at the next council meeting so you can kind of get an idea and feel for what we have to do over the next few months.
Okay, that'd be good.
So now the members of the airport committee, you're Jane, Mylan.
Justin.
Justin.
And Justin, good, good.
There's the broadband committee. I think it's just Mylan and me?
Yeah.
Oh, you're on too, sorry.
Yeah, I guess I am on, yes, I'm on the broadband committee, so, that's right.
And that, as far as getting the funding to study down, that work is done. We'll continue that committee, but I'm not sure how much, there'll be a meeting just yet.
And is there, there's, we're going to have another meeting with the consultants?
Which one?
Broadband?
No.
No?
We've issued the final report and it's.
Because those.
I'll talk with them and see if they need to have another meeting, but I'm fairly certain that their work is done.
And those, those particular committees that aren't the standing committees, sunset when they finish that particular task. So I think that's will be the final decision. It'll be submitted to you to decide anyway as a council. But I think everything that that committee set out to do is done and should be proud of how quick that work was done as well. We have also had the wildlife committee. The members there, Jane is on there.
So Shannon, was Guy also, I think, on, was he a part of that?
Yeah, I'm, Guy was on a number of committees.
Maybe Guy was on that.
So who's on it, you?
So Shannon. And Lauren attended that meeting when we had, so that might be something, if Guy was on that committee, that you might want to pop in on if that, I mean.
Interested in doing, and I'm not sure how much of these committees, doesn't mean it's a good time commitment, but.
But we're going to add an additional advisor to the committee, not another member, but an advisor. And that is our new building inspector, code enforcement. Because he has about 20 years of trapping experience and experience. And he will be a real benefit to that work. So I want to make sure I announce this, so we know he's going to be on our next, at our next meeting to help us with different things that we need to address and deal with.
So Lauren, did you say you wanted to be on?
I think that's, every committee we have, both standing and special committee meetings, so I think we've got them all covered. No doubt there will be more. They're effective for getting city business completed. Do we need any kind of motion on this particular item?
I may just double check, but I don't think so.
We have the membership recorded. There's not disputes over any of the.
Just says the appointment to each of the council committees shall be by council during the first meeting in the council of January of every even year. No council member shall serve more than two, that is the standing committees. You can serve on one or two if it's a special meeting. It just says the appointment shall be made by the council, so you've done that.
It's done, we've got it recorded, so it'll all be there to prevent the mayor from forgetting it or changing it or totally changing everything. The next item on the agenda, there's no resolutions, no ordinances to discuss tonight. We will have some work in that area at the next meeting. We'll hear now the board of officers and city administrator, and we'll begin with Larry, the mayor, city administrator.
Okay, well, the main thing I wanted to address was the fact that the holidays are over. It seems like there's always a little bit of a slowdown and catch up, but it is the year end. And so the year end work is, is what we're working on right now. We are in that open period between the end of the year and the 20th of January, where we close out all of the, all of the entries that we need to make for 2019 and close the books for 2019 and begin 2020. So we'll have a couple of, at the next council meeting, we'll have a few invoices that are still from 2019 and then we'll have a number of invoices that will start in 2020. And so we've been working on that and getting the budget set up. But we are ready to rock and roll for the new year and I think everybody is excited about getting started in 2020. It's always nice, I was just talking with Roger about, it's almost like a clean slate almost, ready to go and start again and make it another memorable year, so we're excited about that. I've got a lot of activity set up over the next couple of council meetings to begin working on things we talked about in the 29, 2020 budget. So we'll get moving on those things and it'll be an exciting year.
I'm forward to it. Anything else?
No. Oh, wait, there is one other thing. I just want to mention that we do have the city action days reservations made and registrations at NIA. We will leave on the 28th, which is Tuesday the 28th, and come back on Wednesday the 29th. It is short, in one day and out the next day, but it's short because the session is a short session. And we have, we usually try to set up a breakfast meeting with our legislatures, Curtis King, Senator King, Representative Mossbrucker, Representative Corey. We like to set up a breakfast meeting on the morning that we're there, which will be Wednesday the 29th. And we have a place where we can go and meet with them. And so so far, Representative Mossbrucker and Senator King have confirmed that they'll be there at our breakfast meeting on 6:30 at the Red Lion, 6:30 a.m., sorry about that. That's the best time for them, given the, you got to take what you get. But we have that all set up, ready to go. Still waiting on a response from Representative Corey.
It really does, it's really good to touch base with your legislators during the, during the year. Let them know what your concerns are now and the things that you're hoping to work with them on during the year. It's very productive. I hope, who, we have signed up now?
So you and I and Phil and.
My plan is.
Does anybody else want to go? The expenses are paid, the work is worthwhile to meet with these legislators. You'll see them during the year anyway, but.
Actually going on Monday that week on behalf of Brewers Guild, so I figured there's no need to go back. But if there's anything Goldendale specific, I can slip it in.
Okay, good.
Are there any other specific speaking points that the city will be addressing?
We have, we're just getting ready to start, I was actually just going to mention that, thank you, that we are looking at any information. You guys might have the important topics of discussion or things that you'd like us to bring up. We as a group just started talking about it today at our department head meeting about those things that we wanted to start talking to our legislators about, including some of the recent activities related to guns and I don't know if you want to say anything more about that, but.
Seizure of guns during domestics or mental health, when a judge makes that order, how are we supposed to go get them? And also tabs, the controversy right now over vehicle tabs. So there's different things that we could address with our legislators.
But anyway, if there are any particular subjects of interest on your part and you want us to take up there with us, we certainly can do that.
Exactly, if you can't be there, then let us know what you would want us to ask them and we'll discuss it with them and get some, at least a start to the process to get help.
Sure. They like, they like, they like to hear stories about how it affects your community, how a particular law will affect your community. We were even talking about this today, about, you know, what happens when you actually try to enforce a law on the books? What does that mean locally and on, on the ground? What are the, what effect does it have on your community or the people that are involved in the complication, whatever it might be?
Some of the things that the state puts out as new laws or new considerations of laws, how it impacts a large city like Seattle or Vancouver or Olympia or Spokane is vastly different from a small rural community like Goldendale. And very often it's unachievable for a small community where it's normal business for a large city. And so those things that we want to make sure our legislators are aware of, the things that we deal with as a small community, particularly one that's not filled with all kinds of extra resources of financing and other things like that. But they're very sensitive, these are very experienced legislators for one thing, they are dedicated to helping this community and our county. And it's enjoyable to work with them. I think you'll find it a good exchange anytime that they're here or if you're there. They're very willing to help us, that's a good, good relationship.
I'd be interested in attending and just need to check some calendars and I'll let Larry know.
Okay, let's go tomorrow, the next day and we'll put you in, real good. Next item, the report of our council members, I'll begin with Mike.
Well, anyway, I guess I just say welcome a new council member and I think we've got an exciting year coming up, like Mayor Larry mentioned, and so look forward to it. Thank you.
Well, I'm just excited to get going on the next year. And I've had a small period of time to do some learning in that, you know, before being sworn in as the elected official now. So I think it'll be, it'll be good, there's a lot of things I'm excited about.
Good, looking forward to it too. Andy?
Only question I have, Larry, events committee?
Events committee?
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to try to get something moving sooner rather than later. I thought about maybe next Monday, that might be a little too soon to get enough time. Might be too short of a time period to get going on it. So the other thing I thought about was maybe six o'clock on the 21st or 5:30 or something like that.
I might be able to work that out. I should be able to. I'm good on that. Are you good on that?
I don't know. I have to see. Can I let you know?
Okay. Something I can't learn, I didn't know was going to be there.
Well, the question is, do we want to have presentations like we've done in the past? Or do we want to just meet with them and make a decision?
It feels like time is of essence, so if we can make it more expedited, that would be better.
Okay. Why don't we just invite the event committee, or all the applicants to the meeting and just say, we're going to decide instead of having the presentations. I mean, most of them are, would be repeat presentations. We can go through that hoop, but we've been through the hoop several times with many of the applicants. In the interest of time, like Justin said, maybe it would just be better to have the committee meet and make a decision and talk about the money and how it's spread out and.
That's one that I'm pulling into there. Can they provide, maybe not a whole presentation, but the information to what each one is?
We can maybe not do a whole presentation. Maybe we could just do a shortened version, just a summary, executive summary of what they're asking for.
Yeah, just.
If you would rather do that, why don't we, I think that would be good since you're just new to that committee. It might be a good idea for you. That's a good way for you to get to know those applicants. So now that we're talking, maybe we should just go ahead and do that and meet at 5:30. That would give us enough time to hear from each one of the committee people and give us enough time to get that notice out there and give us enough time to.
So is that kind of inch on if Justin can make it on the 21st?
And just put it down.
Okay. We can probably change it during the week time. I can work it out.
Okay, this is, this time it'll be a Tuesday, so I don't know if that changes anything for anybody. Because it's the day after Martin Luther King holiday on Monday. Okay, so why don't we, does that answer your question, Andy?
Yep.
There's kind of a long way to go about doing it.
That's your way, Richard.
No, welcome. And the public works, we.
You'd like to have a public works committee meeting? Okay.
It doesn't have to be like super stupid.
You can fit it in there sometime. Why don't we tend to at least.
Tell us our smaller.
Well, I was talking with the department head meeting today and I said, I bet that council's going to want to start setting up some meetings.
Right. We were talking about particularly concentrating on Mondays. And if that's a difficult day, then we need to switch to another day where we, most committee meetings will occur on that, whatever day you all want to meet on.
Actually, I would suggest for the public works committee though, I would suggest a meeting on the 27th of January.
The last Monday of the month?
The last Monday of the month. That would be correct. Would you guys prefer to meet earlier or is seven o'clock still okay?
I'd prefer to meet earlier.
Six o'clock?
Earlier would be great, yeah.
Six o'clock? Okay, I hear a cease shaking of heads till six o'clock on Monday, the 27th of January.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Lauren, have any thinking?
Thank you for the warm welcome. I'm just looking forward to learning more about the details of the city council business and helping it out working.
Good. Thank you. Very happy you're here. Jane?
Yeah, welcome, Lauren, and cheers, Andy, as our new mayor pro tem. And so, you know, I wanted to give a little shout out. I saw on Facebook that the Goldendale Library is going to be hosting Todd Jacobson, who is our wildlife conflict guru, who's come and talked to us here at council. He's also been a part of our wildlife committee meeting. He's going to be at the library presenting this Wednesday, which is the 8th at 6:00 p.m., talking about, you know, some of the large local carnivores that make their way into our fair city. And, you know, which part of what we decided on the wildlife committee was that outreach was going to be really important as far as, you know, making people aware of why these animals are coming to town. So I just wanted to put a word out for that because I don't know how much advertising it's getting, other than the local Facebook page. So other than that, Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you. Justin?
Well, I've kind of said all the things that I was going to say. Welcome, Lauren. And I want to talk about the event committee, which we did, so it kind of covers it for me.
On the mayor's side, as I looked at the council developing further with new members and re-elected older members and our existing members that are still on the council as well, I'm looking forward to a productive year working with you. It's a joy as a mayor to work with people that are so interested in our city and dedicated to doing everything that they can to make it a better place. That's exactly what we're here for. And everybody is already very serious about their role and their experience. And I want to caution all the council members except Jane. She's a schoolteacher and she can give us pop quizzes most any time. I'm sorry when I say I think pop quiz. You know what my problem was at school? But I'm looking forward to a productive year, working together, cooperating, working with a lot of other people, finding funding for the things we need and getting our progress that they were hoping each one to do. And I want to welcome all of you newly elected, re-elected, everyone. It's a delight to serve with you. Thank you. The next item is public comment. If there's anyone here for a public comment, please come forward and let us have your name and address. I don't believe there is. We need a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Move to the second to adjourn the council for January 6th, 2020. All in favor?